Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the special presentation for the Board of Commissioners on COVID-19 planning and potential impact of that virus. And what I'd like to do today is those who will enable, please stand. We'll have a moment of silence, and then I'll have the officer leave and the president leave us.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with number T, justice for all.
Mr. Hosack, I believe you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Board. Wanted to provide the Board just some basic, an overview of what we're going to be presenting this afternoon to the Commissioners. The purpose of this update is to make sure the Board's aware of all of staff's current efforts and planning exercises, first and foremost, to ensure the safety of our 5,000-plus employees as well as our 760,000-plus citizens here in the county. We take that very seriously, as does the Board of Commissioners. But we also know that we need to make sure that while we take these efforts to make sure that we keep everybody safe in accordance with recommended guidelines, that we also make sure that we are maintaining county services and essential county services to keep us in business. We will provide you an update from specific departments this afternoon, and then kind of finish up with some general recommended guidelines for how we plan to move forward. We did want to stress that right now, these particular recommended guidelines have been developed specific to or with the authority that we have over Board of Commissioner-controlled departments. But we are certainly encouraging and sharing our efforts with the other elected officials, and are stand ready to assist them in implementing these for their particular operations as their needs may dictate. Finally, we're going to finish up with some HR policies that we feel like we do need to get in front of the Board this afternoon for adoption that will help us accomplish the general guidelines and recommendations that we'll finish up with, with the Board. And what I'd like to do very quickly is, one, congratulate Dr. Jackie McMorris. She was selected to lead an internal task force that began these efforts probably about a week and a half, two weeks ago, and I'm going to ask her to kind of give you some specifics on how we've proceeded with our internal task force and how we move forward. Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you, Mr. County Manager, Chairman, Commissioners. On March the 9th, an internal task force was established so that we could do two things primarily. One, to ensure that all of our county departments would have an avenue to share feedback and to address employee and citizens' concerns in the manner in which we share information. So we wanted to be able to efficiently provide updates in a seamless and proficient manner. So that was the purpose of the internal task force. This internal task force is comprised of about 30, 35 people, to include our agency directors, the courts, elected officials, public safety, and representatives from the county manager's office. We were meeting daily at 10:30 as a touch point, and for those who could not come, thanks to Sharon and IS, we created WebX, and we also had social media types of platforms in which we could communicate with people, including Group Me, to let them know real quick updates to what was going on, as this has been a fast-developing type of situation that we've been in. The task force will stay in place until further notice, and we are continuing to keep them apprised of things that you all will be deciding on today. So we've asked them, those who cannot be here, to stream this particular meeting so that they can stay apprised of what's going on. So what we want to do today, real quickly, is to ask several departments to bring you up to speed on some of the concerns that they have faced, most of which you are aware of via email, and to share with you some of the recommendations in dealing with some of the issues that have arisen as a result of the coronavirus. At this time, I would like to start with public safety and ask Director Kreider if he would come forward and share from that department, of which on your PowerPoint presentation, we will follow the departments that are listed on your screen.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, County Manager. First of all, I want to tell you from the onset of these activities, we've implemented the National Incident Management System Framework, better known as NIMS. And as we move forward, we're continuing to implement ongoing pandemic disease containment and control strategies. Next. And we've actually created an overall county incident action plan. This incident action plan will be updated as we move forward through the next, hopefully, short duration of weeks, maybe months to come. But initially, where we have our focus is in some areas of minimizing public county employee exposure to the COVID-19, and we're doing that by, first of all, determining which county-wide departments should continue their normal operations. We're looking at monitoring the situation and taking guidance from the CDC, the Georgia Department of Public Health, and Cobb Douglas Public Health. And then we're, as of today, we're going to be reviewing, updating, and training on hopefully some new policies that will come before you later today. Our second main goal is to maintain critical infrastructure and essential services. We have been, as Dr. McMorris said, been working with our elected officials, our county manager, agency directors, and all of our department heads to determine our essential services. And then we also want to explore the idea of having some of our essential employees telework from home. We're monitoring staffing levels, obviously, due to the potential exposures of our employees, and also for schools being closed, our staffing levels, obviously, can be impacted by this. We're coordinating with the local, state, federal agencies to identify and acquire needed resources. You'll see in just a few moments where members of the fire department have reached out to all of public safety agencies within Cobb to try to identify resources that we're going to be needing moving forward. And then we also are coordinating with local, state, federal agencies to provide needed assistance. And in most of these cases, we're just playing a support role, because we have the subject matter experts that we're following their direction and providing support as needed. And then, obviously, we want to anticipate economic and social disruption. The third main topic, if you'll turn that, is to provide for communication technologies and protocols, obviously, through events like this. We know how important communication is, and we know how important accurate, updated, and good communication, what it does to our employees and to our citizens. We want to continue public and media relations involving all of our county stakeholders, and that's from our elected officials through our cities, everyone, all those stakeholders within the county. Where, obviously, a few years back, we developed some business continuity plans throughout all of the departments throughout the county, and we have now implemented all of those, and each of our departments are working through those continuity of operations. We want to identify and document direct and indirect cost. Obviously, there's going to be some costs that we take on as a result of what we're experiencing, and working with Cassie and our EMA, we're making sure that we're documenting all of this so that we can put together a plan after-action report at the conclusion of this event. We want to identify and monitor metrics and milestones and timelines. Obviously, we want to maintain appropriate FEMA documentation. This incident action plan will review, be reviewed every 12 hours, and a situational status report will be communicated as needed. And then as we move forward with our new plans, as we finalize them, we implement them, we will review them periodically. Now, I want to just tell you a few things that, before I go to the individual departments, we've had a lot of people talk about what is the route that I take if I think that I've got the virus and I need to be tested. Well, I'm going to talk about that. First of all, let's look at the symptoms. Obviously, most of us now are aware of what the major symptoms are, but if you're in close contact with someone with the virus and develop the symptoms, call your health care provider and tell them about your symptoms and your exposure. They will be the ones to decide whether you need to be tested. We've had a lot of people calling our public safety departments, asking, "Where can I get tested? How do I go about getting tested?" And so I wanted to provide that guidance. And then, over the weekend, Dr. Nemar put out this statement that Cobb Douglas Public Health, along with our county partners, are going to assure everyone that we're working tirelessly to protect your health and well-being, and it gives these websites that we all can visit to get up-to-date, accurate information, and those websites are available to give you that information, and hopefully, everything's there that you need.
Excuse me.
Now, let's talk about-
Excuse me, Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, for that fifth bullet, if someone is uninsured, who is their first point of contact?
If someone is what?
Is uninsured.
1-866-PUBLIC-HEALTH?
Pub Health.
Pub Health, I'm sorry.
P-U-B-H-L-T-H. 1-866- Pub Health. P-U-B-H-L-T-H. H-L-T-H, okay.
Now, we'll talk about the department-specific within public safety and what we've been doing and where we're going. First of all, there's been several cancellations. You can see them on the board, and for obvious reasons, where meetings or events were taking place that were going to bring large numbers of people together, you can see some of those. We always host the Metro Atlanta EMS Conference, where there's about 600 participants. We canceled that. Our awards ceremony, our lieutenant and engineers promotional assessment process, where we had assessors flying in from out of state, and for obvious reasons, we canceled those. All of the events that we interact with the school system, we've canceled. We've altered our response techniques on EMS calls, obviously, through the CDC recommendations. You see the second bullet there, what we've communicated to our responders. We worked with 911 Dispatch on removing some of our fire response from general weakness calls that may be ambulance-only. We're trying to limit exposure as much as we can to those calls and remain in service to answer those more serious calls. And then we've also removed the police department response from most of our medical calls. Typically, a police officer would be dispatched with fire or medical calls. We still are sending them on calls where they're needed, whether it be a homicide, obviously, or the calls where a police officer is needed. But the general medical calls, they're no longer responding to those. Next. We've coordinated with public safety agencies throughout Cobb County to identify their resource needs. We are partners with all of our public safety departments throughout the county, our cities, trying to get a idea of what their resource needs are, so that when those resources become available, we can place those orders. We are continuing to work on a closed pod, and that means a point of distribution. And let me just make sure that everyone knows that that will not be up and running for our public safety until a-
Vaccine.
Vaccine, thank you, Lisa. Until a vaccine is created. And so, but we, we have that in the works and working on that. We're monitoring staff levels, like I said, because of school closures. We upgraded our PPE levels. Five of our employees-
Randy, could I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
You talked about the schools. Obviously, with the schools being closed, the schools have their own police force. Have we talked to them at all, like if we kind of run short of potentially bringing them in?
Well, we've got, we have not. We can reach out to them, but once I get to the police department, we'll talk about staffing levels.
Okay, all right.
Yes, ma'am.
Director, what does that mean, you monitor staff levels as a result of those who may be impacted by school closures?
Childcare.
Do employees feel comfortable in, in being able to provide proper care for their children at this time? And to be honest, I'm quite, I'm, this is a broader concern beyond fire, but many families like mine have children who are home right now, who are not in school, and employees are here today. Saying we're monitoring it, that does not let me know what is specifically done so those employees know that they can provide adequate care for their children.
No, no. When I, when I say monitoring, I'm talking about if we have a number of our employees who have to stay home with their children to take care of their children, what does that do to our ability to provide services?
Okay.
And that's really where my question came from.
So you're telling me, so you're telling me that employees within fire feel like they have latitude to be able to be home with their children at this time, if they need to?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
And that's been communicated?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, all of our employees. We, we know that there are childcare issues, and we're accommodating those because of, we have very large departments, fortunately, where hopefully we can close down certain divisions that may not be an immediate, direct response to 911 calls, and we're pulling some of those resources in to ride on our fire trucks, cover a beat, so on and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
No, I was just commenting that that's why I brought up the school police, because that's an additional source of-
Sure.
-police officers to help fill in for exactly what we're talking about.
And if that works out, a lot of those school police are former Cobb County officers. So we did have five of our firefighters who were out, but they're back at work today. Unfortunately, we had three others over the weekend who've been sent home to be quarantined. And then, obviously, when we go on those calls with someone who we suspect may have the virus, we follow up with hospitals to, once that is confirmed, we go back and see who those responders were who responded to that particular call, and that's how we're able to identify those that may have been exposed. And then, obviously, we're following our current county travel training guidelines. On the police side, they've taken some measures to limit exposure as well. Many calls that they can handle via telephone, they're going to take advantage of those opportunities. Their squad meetings are virtual meetings so that it don't bring a number of those police officers in off the street with unknowingly being exposed to the virus. Again, they're responding to fewer EMS calls. And then, should a precinct suffer, Commissioner Ott, this is what addresses your question, should a precinct suffer from reduction in staffing, we're looking at the specialty units that are already canceling some of their obligations, that we can bring them into a beat if necessary. We're also looking at developing a plan to go to 12-hour shifts in PD if the need arises. We're preparing for that. Hopefully, we don't get to that point. They also are considering teleworking for essential non-sworn staff, and then annual training and firearms training. Some of that is being postponed, and then they've also canceled the faith forum that was scheduled for later this month. Our 911's communications, they've played a critical role in preparing our responders to anticipate what they're responding to. A lot of the information that they're gathering and screening these calls and relaying that information to our responders is huge, and they're doing a good job in that. They're flagging addresses where there's been confirmed or presumptive cases to reduce first responder exposure. Next. They've provided VPN access with, 911 has some special VPN licensing, licenses that their dispatchers can work, can telework as well. They're looking at compiling a list of employees that can come in should they have staff shortages, and they're using their backup center in conjunction with their primary dispatch center to provide that social distancing. They've postponed all tours and visitors to the 911 center. They've restricted police and fire animal services personnel access to the center. Vendors, contractors, unless it's necessarily business-only, they've canceled the ability for people to tour the facility, and then they also have postponed their annual awards. And then finally, our EMA, which is playing, obviously, a critical role in this event. They're tracking, tracking and documenting county-wide significant events, expenses, planning efforts related to the virus. They've developed incident response plans and best practices as relayed by federal, state, and local health officials. Here again, we're reviewing our business continuity plans, our continuity of operation plans, to ensure that each of our departments has everything that it needs to meet the objectives and remain consistent. We've distributed the pandemic annex to all of our county partners that they're operating by now, and then they've reviewed the pandemic action items with all the BOC departments and the judiciary, and that plays into the task force that Dr. McMorris is chairing. And then our last slide is that EMA's been the liaison between county departments and public health for health concerns and best practices. EMA has also been facilitating that communication that we talked about earlier to our, all of our county departments and our community partners. And then they're ensuring that the EOC's operational and functioning at a level-two monitoring. And then finally, we're utilizing WebBOC to track all of these events, which is most critical when it comes to reimbursement and getting back to a norm when all of this is over. So with that, I'll entertain any questions that you may have focused strictly at public safety.
How are you, how are you being able to flag people that have the virus or presumptive have it? Where are you getting that information from?
We, we're getting it from the hospitals. That's what that slide spoke about. That's how we identify which of our responders actually went on that call. We're communicating that with the hospital. If that hospital knows that that's a county resident, then they're reaching out to us, letting us know that that person has tested positive. We go back through our records management system, who was, see who was on that call, and we have a record of that.
Okay, thanks.
Well, in the same lines, Randy, I know that in listening to how things are done at the airport when people come back from international destinations, and when they're to get the medical screening after going through customs, there was discussion about the fact that it gets entered into a CDC system that's supposedly notifying Cobb Douglas Public Health. Would it not be also possible to get that information forwarded over to 911?
I don't know. I could, we could research that.
Well, I mean, my understanding is that if somebody comes in from an international destination, one of the hotspots, let's just say Germany.
Right.
A US citizen, they live in Cobb, they're going to go through customs.
Sure.
And then, because they came in from Germany, they're going to be directed to the secondary screening, where they're going to get screened by the contractor that HHS has, and then ultimately, CDC, and their, their information's going to get put into the CDC system, which then supposed to be sending it to Janet and Lisa's office so that we, the county, because we're responsible for maintaining their quarantine, so it would seem that-
Hey, Jen, Dr. Nemar, can you come up to the microphone?
My thoughts just are, because if we have these people that are self-quarantined, and let's just say they do indeed have the virus and they get sick, 911's going to get the call to send somebody out, while we at Cobb Public Health already know that they're a potential person with an infection. So it would seem to me that it would be good to somehow at least get that address in there, because we know what it is.
Yeah, so that, that gets a little bit difficult, because the patients that are people that are being monitored are being watched for 14 days, right? We don't know if they're going to develop symptoms, so I understand how it could be an issue for our first responders to respond and not know what the symptoms are, but we're monitoring a lot of people that are just entering it into a computer system. And so we don't really kind of respond until we know that they've popped up symptomatic, otherwise, they're just waiting out there 14 days. So it's hard to go back and give them the entire list and connect that list together, but my recommendation would be to, you know, as you go forward, it's what's called universal precautions, just kind of plan for, the patient may be, you know, we're getting to the point now where a lot of people are going to be, you know, quarantined, or they're going to know somebody is quarantined, then just take, you know, essential precautions every time that you go, unless it's something like I fell off a ladder, but if you have a medical concern, then, you know, just be prepared.
Yeah, I mean, I only bring it up because we're being told that 911 Center is starting to flag people, so if they're already starting to flag people, why wouldn't we not want to try to use information that's out there?
You're getting it after the fact, though, right? So they're getting it after they get tested, and then it's a contact precaution or investigation, so they'll get reached out, oh, 911 brought them, and so that's why it's going back to them, it's kind of retroactive in that way.
Commissioner Burrow.
Stay up there, Dr. Nemar.
Doc Nemar.
Sorry. The HIPAA laws, are those requirements still in place, or are they being-
Yeah, so HIPAA laws are still in place right now. We do have a little bit more latitude if it's a public health issue that if we need to, like, so if I needed to, you know, call the school or something like that and let them know this is a public health concern, and we have a, a patient that could affect public health in a bigger audience, then we are able to have some latitude with that, but it's still in place, definitely for media and things like that. We can't let any of that out, but if there is some sort of emergency or urgency that we need to protect the public safety and reveal something to someone who may not be directly taking care of that patient, there is some latitude, but there's, you know, a lot, it's a fine line, though.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Don't go far.
One other question.
Commissioner Cupid, yes?
Yes, ma'am.
So on the general county incident action plan, I presume that the bullet that provides that it will be determined which county-wide departments should continue normal operations, that'll be assessed over each agency or over each department?
Yes, that, that's something that I think will be discussed later on today through the county manager's office.
Oh, okay, so that's still being determined-
Yes, ma'am.
-on a departmental level, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. We just wanted to give you an update on what's going on with the Department of Transportation. As you know, our airport division is fairly small, so Carl has already implemented a rotation of work over there with his, his department and his employees. One of the things that we're doing in conjunction with the Customs and Border Protection is as international flights come into town, if they're coming to our airport, they're required to present a 24-hour notification of where they've been, and before they come in, 24 hours prior to that, they're, they're contacting our customs office before they land. They're providing where they've been, pointed departures, restricted countries, that if they've come from restricted countries, say if it's one of the hotspots, they're directed to another airport. We're not taking those flights into McCullum Parkway, McCullum. So as they're entering, the aircraft pilot and passengers have manifestos, they're providing their backgrounds, and any destinations that they've visited over the past 14 days prior to entering that airport. And they're asked to be, to submit to an interview as necessary for health conditions or any type of symptoms that they may have. After they've landed and they've done that, aircraft's received by the Customs Border Patrol Officer, and then if there's any suspicions or questions, then we're detected by the Customs Border Patrol Officers, then the CDC, we request their involvement so they can come out and investigate and provide recommendations for those passengers. We are implementing US policy at this location, and we're making decisions based on that policy and the information that we're provided, and on a case-by-case basis. And then we're also, Customs Border Patrol guidelines and standard operating procedures are being updated regularly as more and more information is being presented.
Quick question. I know that down at the airport, air crews are not having to go through the security or the medical screening that the passengers do if they come in from some of the hotspots. And you're, I know that, like you said, any passenger that comes from one of the hotspots has to go to a different airport, but are we checking that the air crews that are coming in there have not been somewhere else? Because I know that the ones that are coming into the Hartsfield and, you know, the 13 airports, they're being kind of monitored just because they're coming into that airport, but, you know, I think we need to kind of make sure that the air crews-
And I, and I can only answer that the CBP's following the guidelines that they have in place, so I don't want to say specifically what CBP is doing and what they're not doing, but they're following their guidelines as necessary. Our particular officer, if there's anything unusual or anything out of the ordinary or related to a hotspot, the CBP officer on staff is calling the supervisors, and they're determining how to handle that on a case-by-case situation.
Is that, is that the only slide on-
On the airport, yes.
Okay, no, no, not so fast. Okay, so we know that HHS is bringing passengers out to McCullum from-
I'm sorry, I can't, I couldn't-
Health and Human Services, we know they're bringing passengers out to McCullum to be relocated back to their states.
Yes.
So my understanding was that when they left California, they had all kinds of people in special suits to monitor them on and off the airplane?
Well, it's been informed to us that we do have passengers from the cruise ship that were, that were stationed at Dobbins for their quarantine period. There have been some flying out on private jets back to their home states. They are all suited up, the passengers themselves appropriately. They are taking their ground transportation directly to the aircraft, and they are boarding the aircraft to depart from the airport on private flights, so they're not exposing the public.
All right, okay. Just want to make sure. Thanks.
Okay, so we'll talk about transit next. So at CobbLink, we have been working hand-in-hand with guidance from Federal Transit Administration. They've been very good about providing information for us and guidelines. So in conjunction with that information and working with our partners at Serta, Marta, Gwinnett County, we've, we've tried to do a really good job of putting together some standards of operations procedures at CobbLink. So we've also been heavily in communications with our first transit, our contractor over there, and they have done a great job of making sure that we have disinfectant and sanitation for the buses and meeting specific guidelines that FTA has provided. So it's, there are certain, certain types of disinfectants that they have on the list that we can utilize to have a higher disinfectant quality for the buses. So we're disinfecting our buses more frequently every afternoon day when they're, they're fueling up. We're making sure that those buses are getting cleaned and disinfected. And then we're also doing a better job or a more frequent job of cleaning where the drivers and dispatch areas congregate. We're cleaning equipment that are high-touch areas where there's high-foot traffic. We're making sure those are cleaned really well multiple times a day also. And then we're also holding daily bus inspections. We have bus inspections, but this is just, just another precaution to make sure that they're, they're getting sprayed down and disinfected. Some of the things that we're doing for the public is, and for our drivers, to make sure everyone is, is being as precautious as they can be is we're making sure our operators have gloves and hand sanitizers on the bus. We're making sure that staff and our contract staff have disinfecting wipes for their areas, for spray for common areas where you have your printers, copiers, phones. We're trying to share information with all of our staff, including our contract staff, on preventative measures as it's being pushed out from the county, Dr. McMorris. We're sharing all this information with our contractors and our staff, preventative measures from the CDC. And then we're providing the COVID-19 prevention recommendations for passengers while on board the buses. If you can get to the next slide. For customer engagement, we're disinfecting our interior of our facilities more frequently along with providing disinfectant to staff. I'm sorry. We're posting flyers on efforts to minimize passengers' risk to exposure of COVID-19 on the buses, at our transfer centers, at our parking rides, online and on social media, just trying to get more and more information out for our passengers and our, our drivers. We're directing our passengers online to social media and CobbLink mobile apps for service announcements, not knowing what could, could not happen. There, there is a potential that there could be a route that has to be revised or, you know, other things that could happen for CobbLink. But we're just trying to be very careful and as, as things develop, we'll make sure that information gets pushed out to the public. We're also trying to issue news releases on next steps that are being taken by CobbLink to minimize exposure to COVID-19. We're holding weekly coordination calls with our regional partners such as Marta, Gwinnett, Serta, and then increasing the supply of cleaning products and materials on hand. One thing I'd like to mention is that the only facility we really have for CobbLink that, that, that has a lot of interaction with the public is our pair transit facility. So we're making sure that we're doing a good job of keeping all that cleaned. And we're going to really push out information for, for the public that needs to buy Breeze cards or media brochures, that, you know, a lot of this stuff can be taken care of online. If you, if you can't purchase materials online, you know, you can still come into the office, but we're going to have precautions in place so that their welfare and the welfare of our employees is, is taken into account. Okay?
Sure.
There's a popularized measure that the CDC has taken for there to be limited interaction or social interaction of people of 50 or above. I don't know what type of ridership is on some of our buses at a given time, but I have a, a lot of concern about the ventilation that's on buses and just the general sanitation beyond just the, the once-a-day cleaning and how you're taking each passenger as they come on, not, not knowing their health conditions. Have there been any broader guidelines that have been provided for how to address this from a public health perspective? Because my presumption is that our most vulnerable workers too are maybe the ones who are, are most dependent on transit. And there's a lot of concern about those who may be essential employees who are having to work and take our buses. But I mean, our public buses just seem to, to be a place where there's just an inherent risk.
So, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So part of what we're doing, so yes, we know that a lot of our pair transit riders especially have some type of disability or have that, not even so on our pair transit, but just all of our services. And so we're looking at, as we're waiting on those additional supplies to come in, ways that we can sanitize those vehicles more frequently. So not only is it the disinfectant spray, but just trying to make sure that all of the area seating handles included are sanitized and disinfected. And also with our contractor, they have measures in place to, for their employees just to keep the interaction between the passenger and the drivers limited. Typically, pair transit operators aren't, don't have the physical touch with the, if someone is wheelchair or needs some assistance. So we're trying to limit that, but our contractor does have those guidelines in place.
Is there hand sanitation that's available to bus riders?
It is currently not, just because of stock. So we've issued all of our operators with their own individual sanitizer and just as we're able to purchase, not only us, but our contractor purchased them, we're trying to put them out on the vehicles as we can, but currently not right now. And also with the messaging that we've posted with the flyers, it's not only what are we doing, but the messaging that CDC Public Health has also issued as what are the recommendations for the general public? So if you have your own sanitizer, bring those, so those same type measures.
Okay. This, I mean, I, I know there's been some messaging around discouraging the use of masks, but if anywhere seems to be a place where they, they may be encouraged, I would want to thank those that may be in close proximity on our buses. I just don't know how, I don't know how.
Yeah, but everything, everything they say, the mask does you no good if you do not have the coronavirus. And by buying them, they are in short supply for the doctors that need them.
Certainly.
So I don't think we need to be encouraging people to buy them.
Certainly. I, I'm just very concerned that, you know, I'm just making some notes about some things that may still need to be addressed significantly beyond this meeting. And that's one of them because again, you know, nobody's testing riders. I went to the hospital the other day, they gave us a test before we even entered in, but nobody's doing that when you...
Right. To Commissioner Cupid's point, but to yours also, and I apologize for if I cut you off, but we're, we're issuing the gloves just for the, the touching of the surfaces, just for that reason, knowing that, at, at least currently right now, the guidance and, and the availability for that matter.
Those are for riders, for riders or for drivers?
Both.
Both, okay.
So, well, I'm sorry, the gloves are for the operators.
Okay.
But we haven't issued any masks, one, just for availability, but then also understanding what we've known so far from CDC and public health is that the, the, or the masks aren't, aren't good if you aren't currently ill. And just to leave those for the healthcare workers.
And the gloves are being encouraged for riders to use in your education?
I can't recall if that particular one is, if that bullet is on that flyer. It's not, okay.
And, and I'm seeing, shaking her head, so I presume that there isn't a broader public measure by CDC on public transportation?
So I'm Lisa Crossman from Public Health. So a couple of things, the issue that Bob just mentioned about not wearing masks, ideally the, the use of mask is for the person who is sick, right? To try to decrease that spread of when they cough or when they sneeze and having that get on other people. There's not the benefit to you and I, if we are not sick, to be masking up like before we get on mass transit. So the, the same goes for gloves, right? So if I'm wearing latex gloves and I wear those all day long and I've touched this and I've touched this and I've shaken your hand and then I touch my face, those gloves are not going to protect me from transmitting germs even any more than my regular hand.
Okay.
And so we're not encouraging folks to walk around with latex gloves on in an, in, in an effort to protect themselves or others. Those gloves would really be reserved for folks who are in public health or in healthcare when they're serving folks or possible, or for folks who are in environmental settings and they're cleaning these situat, these areas.
Has the CDC provided any measures regarding public transportation?
Commissioner, I haven't seen that, but I also haven't looked directly for bus lines. So I've added that to our list to get back in touch. There may be some things where we post on your website and on your buses about not getting on when you have these symptoms. That could be one way to help offer a little bit of protection. We might want to look at a few masks that the drivers can have if somebody gets on and is, you know, they don't seem to be sick when they first get on, but they start coughing and hacking while they're on the bus. You could give them a mask to put on to protect until they get off. I, I just need to have our staff look at some of the CDC guidance for CCTs. And I'm sorry, we don't have all those answers for you.
Lisa, in the coronavirus.gov that we talked about last week from the conference call, there is a section on transit.
On, on mass transit, okay.
So in coronavirus.gov, it spells out all the different things, household, businesses, transit, and I forget, there's another one, but there's like four or five different areas that it addresses. And transit was one of them.
And that's part of my reason for asking because there are some measures that I've read that I'm not seeing addressed. And that I just want to make sure that we are, that we're being mindful that just because of the close proximity and the close space within our buses, I wasn't trying to go there or necessarily plead ignorance, but just a mindfulness that we go and, and make sure that, that we're paying particular attention to those that are, that are going to be on transit.
And also just directing people to websites such as the CDC and Public Health, knowing that what we may, because we want to be consistent in messaging, so we're not pushing out something that's not already there and we're not recreating something. So we've added links to various, of our various materials that direct folks to those websites.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then we'll talk about our roadway section real quick. So just things that we're doing at the main building that focuses just mostly on roadway is we're still just doing our disinfecting for our interior, interior facilities more frequently, installing hand sanitation stations. We're cleaning equipment daily, high-touch areas. We've asked staff to eliminate as many face-to-face meetings as possible and try and utilize webex or conference calls, but to continue businesses as much as normal as we can. And then we're following the travel training policy. We're sending out daily emails to staff just to providing updates along with what Dr. McMorris's office is doing. And then we're asking staff to follow the county's website just for current information to stay informed. We're providing the hand sanitation and disinfecting wipes. We're sharing information with staff on preventative measures to minimize exposure and we're working with our managers to reduce contact amongst staff. So really and truly roadway section, we're still trying to maintain as much normal as we can. Our roadway maintenance office is going to continue to work their normal hours and continue to, to work men, work orders. Our traffic operations group, we're still going to do the same. We're going to continue to work work orders and manage the traffic signals in the county. We're going to try and rotate our limit hours in the office for maybe our traffic management center, rotate employees in and out of the building so we don't have as many employees in the, in the office at the same time. Our utilities group will continue to be in the field and manage utility permits. So we're just trying to make sure that we maintain as much normal as possible and, and limit as much exposure and keep social distancing as, as far apart as we can. One thing that, that I didn't mention is within our traffic group, this is probably the only thing that may be impacted significantly, is requests for traffic studies, for signals, intersection improvement, anything like that that would require traffic signal or traffic study, just because traffic patterns are going to be changing drastically over the next time period, those will be suspended until traffic patterns, school goes back into session and we have normal traffic patterns back in, that are back to normal.
Okay, thanks, Erica.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, good afternoon, Commissioners, Chairman, County Manager. Before I go into my slides, I do want to say publicly thank you to the Cobb Douglas Public Health Board, Lisa Crossman. We have, with public services, as you can imagine, access to the public with our agencies is a big thing. And in any event, we have a chain of events that connects an employee with an exposure. We have created our own, we create a decision model that allows us to address it in a uniform manner. And a part of that decision model requires guidance from a credible authority. And they have been very accessible in a few events to help us make some good decisions and handle employee matters in a, in a very quick and appropriate manner. So thank you, and that is a very important part of our systems. Going on to our slides. Most of our decisions in public services have looked at our national trendsetters, thought leaders and governing bodies. You see for parks, as you already know, we've talked offline about some of our decisions regarding our recreational facilities and our sports association, but we were watching these trends. Each agency director was looking at these trends and seeing what was happening in their industries and then basing their decisions on best, best practices. Our parks looked at what the National Sports Association was doing. The presence they set for social distancing and libraries and the UGA Cobb Extension, same chain of thought, closely aligned with the school system, see what they were doing. As, as you notice, our, our decision to close the line with them and support their efforts for social distancing. We've already, you've seen the decision models we've sent to y'all by email and what we were doing at each one of those agencies. The elections has a governing body, as you know, Board of Elections and also Secretary of State. And it's also been some national decisions made on elections. Janine herself right now is down at the Capitol. I think they have a press conference and some decisions that'll be coming out later on what we're doing in terms of elections. But all these things have been affected by this pandemic. Our senior services, as you all know, is the most vulnerable population, so we've made some extra efforts. Director Gibson has done a great job in following the guidance of the regional and, and national authorities. They've kept abreast of what's going on in their industry. And we've been a little aggressive in making decisions regarding what's best for our patrons in that regard. Next slide, please. Current status, as you already know, our parks, I didn't know this myself, close to 500 events a month, anywhere from 5,000 to 3,000. We've already canceled some of these major events, you all are aware of this. We have drawn a line with rental facilities, renting our facilities to our vendors. For example, Maple House, Barnes Amphitheater. We have not told these private entities to cancel their events. We are encouraging them to honor and watch what the CDC is recommending. But at this point, we're not offering any more future or current rentals. We're going to let these pass out. We're going to encourage them not to carry out, but we've fallen short of saying we're canceling your event when they have a contract with us to do an event. The libraries and our Cobb Extension Office, several events canceled. Libraries have been aggressively communicating with our stakeholders and patrons. As you know, the spring book sale, which I'm sad about, was canceled. But obviously, we understand why. And our plant sale was not canceled, but it will be over this Saturday and then we move from there. We won't be having any more events like that. Next slide. I already talked about what elections is doing. I'm going to read from the slide, I think you can see most of that stuff there. I do want to emphasize poll worker attrition was an issue, but I don't think that's an issue anymore with the decisions coming out from the Secretary of State and from the state office and the delay in other primary. Our senior centers, again, Dr. Gibson's done a great job. I will mention bullet number three, we, we thought, I'm sorry, number two. We thought we can tell the seniors, hey, try to slow down, but they, they feel they own those centers. So we had to make that call. They were coming still coughing and sneezing and working out. Our essential activities, however, for seniors will be continued, and that is... and that is anything that's a medical necessity. Where seniors depend on our system, we're going to continue anything that requires food, meal delivery. And we have taken some of the ideas that you talked about, Commissioner. I've discussed that with Dr. Gibson, and they have incorporated. They were already two steps ahead of us. They were already considering that. I think I have one more slide, and this is what I want to maybe spend slight time on indicating. We know that this won't go away in two or three weeks. And so, our stature, our posture now is sustainability. What happens if and when we reopen? How are we going to operate? And so, staff will be looking at these things. And Commissioner Cupid, you mentioned screening. I think airports are doing screening. We are going to look at ideas for seniors to perhaps, what can we do to see if a senior comes in not feeling well, and they're just determined to go in and work out, but they're sneezing, coughing with the temperature? We may try to look at what options we have. That's something we'll be looking at. Return of the North operations with school systems. County manager is going to make that call when our recreation facilities and our libraries open up. But we will be working on educating and informing staff on appropriate practice. And of course, we all are ramping up our sanitation and cleaning efforts. And I think that's my last slide, and I'll take any questions if you have any.
Yes, a question regarding anyone who may have a contract for any of our facilities. You stated that we are not canceling our contracts. If another entity were to cancel, are they going to face any fees?
No, we are actually honoring, if they cancel, we are refunding.
Okay, thank you.
Or they can reschedule.
Yes, or they can have a credit.
Keep their deposit or whatever. I was going to ask about why these centers are closed. Are we going to disinfect and sanitize them?
Yes, ma'am. I was talking with Director Poyer, and they have on their annual contract, twice a year, for a deep cleaning. This would be a good opportunity to execute one of those deep cleanings. And then also, we're going to educate ourselves on some sanitation practices and things that we can do in the event the reopen occurs in the future.
Thank you. And just emphasizing, and meals on wheels will continue.
Yes, ma'am, meals on wheels. We are taking appropriate precautions recommended by the Health Department when we enter into a home to deliver those meals. But yes, meals on wheels and any medical necessities. We've got some, some of our clients require dialysis transport, and obviously, that has to happen.
One of the other things that Willie and I talked about was, you know, seniors that potentially live alone, do not have any family in the area. If they have to self-quarantine, how do they get food? So, they may not be officially in the Meals on Wheels program. And that's what we had talked about yesterday. And I guess, Dr. Gibson, you were way ahead of me. So, good.
All right, any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ross.
Afternoon, Commissioners. Ross Cavendish, Communications. Downstairs, we're working internally. We've got the call center in our office that handles 53,000 calls a year, and it seems like they've gotten 53,000 in the last week. But we are working to try to have that transferred remotely if we have to do some sort of work remotely program in Communications. Working with IAS on that right now, and I'm told we'll be testing that tomorrow. If not, we'll have some essential personnel come in and continue to staff that. I think it's important to keep the main line open during this situation. Also, there's 23 of those switchboards around the county. We're going to work with those switchboards to provide consistent messaging and any instructions if they need that, if they can't staff those call centers. And we've also been using our HR Swift Reach text messaging. I can instantly fire off a text message to 60 county leaders. They'll be getting one this afternoon, in fact. And that'll be in place as we go through this. If people get scattered, we at least have one quick way to contact everyone with essential information. Externally, we already are able to work remotely. If it comes down to that, we can pretty much do what we need to do inside. We can do it outside. A big portion of my staff has VPN capabilities, so we can get in and work on the website no matter where we are. Been holding daily conference calls with public health partners and cities and others. I've talked to some people in the last week more than I've talked to them in the last year, and that will continue going forward. We have a pretty good line of communications going on, so we stay in our lane and make sure that if people have questions, we send them to the right authority rather than trying to answer it ourselves or give out incorrect information. And of course, we have our Cobb TV resources that we can access remotely as well, and we'll have some folks here, obviously, this week to keep everybody updated. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ.
Good afternoon. You know there had to be one downer up here. We are not optimally placed to handle such an emergency. So, we have used our mutual aid compact with the Fulton County Medical Examiner's Office and are working out the details for having them provide us with an isolation suite. Ours is currently under construction. It's coming along nicely. It'll be ready in six months. Not good enough now. We've also requested additional cooler capacity through the Georgia Department of Public Health. Hopefully, we'll find out today. We have created a draft protocol for triaging and managing our decedents. We're going to work with the public health, or the Health Department as well to make sure that our planning is meeting their needs and their guidelines. But we're going to have to get creative. And I don't even know what that's going to look like yet.
Okay, thanks, Dr. Gillage.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, County Manager, Chair and Stanley Support Services Agency Head. So, you've heard a lot of the departments talk about some of their cleaning, so I want to just talk in general because we're managing some of those contracts. So, early on, because CDC has said that cleanliness and hygiene is so important in controlling this, early on, we began cleaning our buildings and ramping up and sanitizing in our buildings. In addition to the daily cleaning, we started wiping down common surfaces where we had citizens coming in or employees. In addition to that, we also checked very early on with Cobb Douglas Health to make sure that our cleaning supplies before any of this actually got out of hand were acceptable and that the processes we were using. And they gave us some guidelines for our cleaning employees for them to use. So, we've implemented some of those as far as that goes as well, and checked that all of our cleaning supplies are EPA-approved as antimicrobial against the COVID-19 virus. Additionally, we have ordered, and they should be in this week. I'm thinking Scott can tell me exactly when. I think it's tomorrow, additional hand sanitizer stations to put throughout the county with that as well. We also have several of the foggers, which are, which fog with micro, antimicrobial fog that is not caustic and not dangerous for the people that are doing it. They don't have to wear masks, et cetera. So, we have been spraying down common areas frequented by the public in the county for the last week, and we'll continue to do that as additional supplies come in this week with that. And those are just general guidelines we use in any building that we're doing in the county right now, including our contractors who are cleaning. But we do have additional procedures we've put in place for areas that have been exposed to individuals with either, who have been in first contact with COVID or coronavirus patients, or in high-risk populations like the senior centers. We put some of that in place. We have been cleaning the senior centers daily and then deep cleaning them and misting them on weekends. This weekend, we went into all the senior centers and actually cleaned them and misted them down with antimicrobial fog or mist, whatever you call that. And then, we also, if we have facilities that are suspected exposure, they'll be deep cleaned, like the West Cobb Library. That was deep cleaned this weekend by our vendor. If we have those, and as Mr. Tank indicated, Director Tank indicated, we'll be, that same contractor will be deep cleaning some of these other libraries during their closure period. We also, in facilities, we haven't unfortunately had to do this yet, but facilities with confirmed cases in the building, they'll be cleaned by a third party because there's no in-between. It's either clean like normal, deep clean, or you have to actually, EPA recommends a different type of cleaning for where you have a confirmed case in there, and we'll be bringing in a vendor to do that using EPA guidelines for COVID exposure with that. The other thing is that Scott, our property management director, has been meeting with all of our vendors because we have several we have contracts with for cleaning to get their plans for what they plan to do with this, to make sure they continue to clean, to make sure that all of them, to check to see if they are cleaning for COVID or are going to be certified to clean. If this happens to get worse, we've been checking for that, as well as meeting with additional distributors for, to see if we need to expand our list of cleaners if we have to do that in that case with that, and to check with pricing, of course. Any questions?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Have we had any confirmed cases in any of our buildings?
Not any confirmed cases, no, ma'am.
Okay.
We've had contacts, but no confirmed cases at all.
Say contacts external to our buildings?
The contact of a contact of a contact.
Okay.
You know, you get a lot of reports when they, when that, everybody's nervous.
Okay.
Some of this may need to be discussed privately, but we are tracking a possible.
Okay. So, the case that I know of is a patron of one of our voucher programs that needed assistance, was in the facility four days prior to symptoms being present, and then another three or four days prior to her test coming back positive. But she did have, this patron did come into a facility with direct contact with an employee.
Okay, and then? Okay, and I would ask, you would just follow your protocol?
They did not require you check. CDC does not require a deep clean like it has prior to.
Presenting the symptoms.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Jessica Guin, Cobb County Community Development. As you all know, many of the services that our agency provides really support the businesses in our community, particularly the construction industry. So, our goal here is to be sure that we are ensuring the safety and the health of our employees as well as our customers at Community Development, but still continuing to maintain a level of service so that we don't have a negative impact on the local economy. As such, some of the steps that we've taken, first of all, our one-stop and site plan review meetings have been canceled until further notice. We are still accepting plans. We're still reviewing plans, just rather than coming in, sitting down face-to-face to go over those comments. We're providing all those electronically. Inspections will continue as per usual. Just to give you some idea, on a slow day, we have about 300 inspections. On a busy day, it's about 600. We do expect that we may see some tapering off of that given the current circumstances. So, we're going to continue to watch our numbers there and see how those inspections trend and whether or not there's any need for staffing adjustment. Code enforcement, again, just like with inspections, both of those groups, they're going to continue to have some face-to-face interaction, but we're trying to limit that as much as possible. Particularly, right now with code enforcement inspections, we recognize that there are a lot more people who are at home right now than typically. A lot of times, code enforcement goes out. They'll go visit a property. Nobody's home to actually deliver the violation notice to or to speak with. We do expect that we will have more people at home, and our plan is to still mail those violations rather than having that face-to-face interaction and exchange of the violation notice.
Violations typically have to be cured within 14, is it 14 days? So, how does that follow-up occur? And even with code enforcement cases, there's limited operation within our court system. So, is there going to be any suspension of those activities?
It will be more limited than it has been as far as, as far as re-inspections or maybe a delayed re-inspection, particularly given the changes with the court system. Typically, we do our compliance checks whenever we're a little bit closer to the court date. So, we recognize that there may be some, some adjustment there that's needed.
Okay. I presume a citizen can contact your office if they have any concerns?
Absolutely, absolutely. We will still be taking those calls, and of course, emails regarding code enforcement complaints. A few other things that we're doing, of course, we've had the Complete Count Committee, and with the census coming up, census day, of course, April 1st. That committee has been active. We don't have any meetings currently scheduled, and our plan is that if we need to reconvene that committee for any reason over the course of the next few weeks, we'll certainly do that by conference call rather than a face-to-face meeting. We do have a license review board meeting that was scheduled on March 19th, so this Thursday, but since this morning, we have gone ahead and canceled that license review board meeting, and those cases will be moved into April. So, we are notifying, we only had two cases there, and expect that to have minimal impact. So, we're going to go ahead and do that. Typically, with our zoning applications, if someone comes in for a zoning request, they'll, of course, bring their application in, and we have a meeting where they come in and they meet with staff to talk about, to get some feedback on it. Again, we're going to cancel those zoning applicant meetings for the time being. We will still review those, and we will be sending that communication through email. So, they're still getting feedback from staff, but again, doing it in such a way that limits that face-to-face interaction. One thing that I know is on your radar is we do have a VOC zoning hearing scheduled tomorrow morning at 9:00. And just to give you some idea of kind of where we are with that, we've had a lot of discussion about it. We only have about 10 cases to be heard. We don't expect that we're going to have a large crowd. We have been talking with Tony to make sure that the learning center is available. So, if we do have a crowd here, or if we do have people here who don't feel comfortable being in the room, and we need to have some, not really overflow space, but some additional space to, you know, provide social distancing.
Ms. Chairman, I can't support that.
Yeah, I think, I'm hearing from a lot of the board members that we have to set the example. So, if we have something like this tomorrow, it says the wrong message. So, I think there's a lot of support in the board that we're going to go ahead and postpone the meeting tomorrow.
Do you want to motion, Ms. Chairman?
Well, I have some questions.
I don't think there requires a motion, does it?
Yeah, the chairman has the authority pursuant to the resolution if he wants to postpone or delay VOC zoning himself.
Well, my concern is you have about 10 cases to be heard, but you also have about nine or 10 on consent.
Right.
But sometimes, people show up to oppose those. So, you really have 19 cases total on the calendar.
Yeah, because everyone who comes, I'm sorry, I apologize.
The, my concern is, these are public hearings. Each side gets 10 minutes to speak, and we can't tell people to stay home and/or if somebody is sick or, you know, not come into a crowd of 50 people or more. We're denying them their due process to speak if they're not comfortable coming to a crowd or a public hearing. So, I think we need to move all the cases to April.
My experience has been is that at the start of the meeting, you have lots of people here, because even though it's here for consent, generally looks favorably if you're here for consent, you're going to be supported. If you're not here, then, you know, so... We're going to have a lot of people here tomorrow morning initially.
Right.
And that goes, that'll probably fly in the face of the CDC 50-person deadline. So, I'm just going to go ahead and, you know, unless there's some serious opposition by the board, go ahead and postpone the March meeting until further notice.
I'm in support and have shared that with staff from last week. I have two cases which could have a number of people present in opposition, and they were generally concerned because their activities have been limited with calls for people to socially distance themselves. However, their participation in their, in their cases of interest could impact the outcome of those cases. So, I support the intent of the board from what it appears to cancel.
And Ms. Chairman, you know, we talk a lot about the citizens that want to come. I've actually talked to some applicants that they do not want to have to come.
Okay, all right, so we're going to go ahead and postpone it.
Okay.
A good try.
We are glad to take whatever the direction the board wants to, but we certainly want to know we're thinking about it either way and trying to plan accordingly.
Well, we're going to, we're going to, look, we all know that we're going to give this a couple of weeks to see what happens, and then a couple of weeks we'll look at everything again.
Right.
I think it's best way to see how, what impact the current mitigation measures we're going to take have before we start making major decisions about rescheduling meetings.
Will everything move to April? Well, that's not my slide.
For now, for now.
Jessica, I have just one other question. What, what does this do to the application deadline tomorrow for May zoning? Or?
We are still.
Tomorrow's the deadline.
Accepting applications. Yes, we are still accepting applications and had not planned to stop accepting applications. I was going to recommend today that we do look at moving the April Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals cases to May. The Planning Commission workshop is coming up on March 30th, so it's, it's upon us. And if we go ahead and make that move now, then we can go ahead and, and get those signs changed and everything.
That's reasonable, absolutely.
Then we'll, we'll do the same, of course, with the March cases too, if we're going to postpone that meeting. We'll just plan to push those out till May. The April Historic Preservation Commission meeting, the deadline for that is March 27th. We don't have any applications for that at this point, so our recommendation is to go ahead and cancel the April meeting of the Historic Preservation Commission. I don't know that we'll get any applications, but we'll go ahead and make that move. Two things that I wanted to put on your radar, and both of these are, are items that are specified by the code, so I think it's important that we, we get some board input on this. And we are currently in the renewal season for business licenses, and we've had a great renewal season. The renewals are coming in, and we're very happy with how that's going. However, by code, 90 days after the payments are due for the occupation tax, at that point, there's a 10% penalty that we start to collect, so that starts on April 1st. One thing that I was going to suggest is that we should defer collection of that 10% penalty to May at the earliest, perhaps even June 1st, given the current circumstances. On a similar note, for alcohol excise payments, the code specifies that those payments are be, to be made by the 20th of the month. I was going to suggest that we may want to look at some leniency there to give a little additional time, given the circumstances, for getting those payments in. One other thing that's also specified by code is, you know, again, we're in our renewal season. The only way per code that we can accept payment for alcohol licenses is by certified funds. We were going to, everything else we can accept credit card payments for by phone. You know, business licenses you can pay for by phone without actually coming into the office. In the interest of reducing foot traffic in our office, as well as the, you know, accepting checks and money and all that sort of thing, we were going to ask that we authorize credit card payments for alcohol regulatory fees.
I think it should be done for a period of time, not forever moving forward.
Like, what period of time are you talking about?
I don't know, maybe three months, four months. Yeah, just maybe until the public health emergency is, is canceled. I mean, because I, I think there's a reason why we don't have credit cards, and so, I mean, you know, I understand why we want, might want to do it now, but... And it may be that they come back to us and change the policy permanently, but I think on a temporary basis, just do it until the public health emergency is, is canceled.
And to your point, Commissioner, I, I asked Alicia this morning, our business license manager, and of course Alicia has a lot more institutional knowledge about this than I do. She's been with the county a very long time. We're not quite sure why the code calls for that. It's not something tied to state legislation, but our plan is to look at the alcohol code. And we expect that, you know, down the road, as we look at the alcohol, alcohol code and bring forth some recommendations, that might be something we recommend a change, but certainly for now, just for the public health.
Right, and that's, that's what I kind of figured, because it's probably one of those things that's been there for a while, but since it is in the code and require code change, you might want to just...
Well, I don't, I don't think that the deferment of the 10%, you know, the 10% penalty on the business license renewals requires any kind of, I think that's a, that's a administrative action that the department can take. Or you want a motion?
Well, you'd have to have an agenda item for, or you could take her as, at her recommendation as part of an agenda item, and then if the board wanted to vote on that and give her the leniency or the, or the county commissioner, the ability to be able to do that, that'd be fine.
We can do that now, right? Add it, make a motion to add an agenda item and then vote on the agenda item, right? Pam?
Yes.
Yeah, but that's, this, I saw the nature of this meeting is what it is. It allows us to do those kind of actions right now, right?
Correct. That's what she's asking for, that special power to do that, yes.
I'll make a motion and we defer the 10% penalty for business license renewals until?
June 1st.
June 1st.
Second.
Discussion. Call a question. Pass if I do zero.
Do you want to, all right, I'll make a motion that the board authorizes Community Development to accept credit card payments for the alcohol regulatory fees until the governor declares the public health emergency over.
So let's add the agenda item, right? We're going to add that to the agenda, then we're going to vote on the agenda item, right? That's where it's going to work, right, Bill? Okay, so that's you done, and we're going to add to the agenda item. I'm going to switch your motion. We have a second discussion? Okay, call a question? Okay, pass if I do zero. Now, I'm going to call a question about deferring the 10% penalty for business license renewals. Any discussion on that? Call a question. Passes five to zero, and then I'm going to call a question on authorizing credit card payments for alcohol regulatory fees. Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero. Sorry? Commissioner Burrow?
Sir, the, the additional item was the alcohol excise taxes, which are due the 20th of the month. If we could have authorization to waive penalties for the March and April payments, perhaps. Again, that's specified by code.
Okay, Commissioner, I want to do it until the end of the public health emergency, right?
That's for the credit cards.
Yeah, the credit cards. So I'll, I'll make a motion to add to the agenda the authorization for Community Development to defer the, what did you call it?
Collection.
Penalties for the alcohol excise.
Right, the penalties for the alcohol excise tax until the end of the public health emergency.
We have a second? Discussion. Call a question. Passes five to zero. Now, I want to call a question as presented and discussion. Call a question. Passes five to zero.
And that's all I have. Thank you all. And I know that's, that's going to be a big help for us as we, again, continue to do our best to serve our, our businesses during this time. So thank you, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners and County Manager Judy Jones, Cobb Water. I'd like to start by ensuring everybody that our drinking water is safe. According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through chlorinated drinking water, so we do have safe water. We purchase our drinking water from the Cobb Marietta Water Authority and distribute it to our customers. So my first slide is going to cover the things that the Water Authority is doing. So on an ongoing basis, even prior to coronavirus, they, the chlorine residuals are monitored at its two treatment plants 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, to ensure optimal removal of contaminants, including viruses and bacteria. In addition, they take more than 200 samples in our distribution system each month to ensure that the chlorine levels are maintained and disinfection is, is taken care of in our system. So a couple of things that they're doing to ensure continuity of operations. They have an emergency action plan that's tailored to pandemics. They are currently in the precautionary stage, which includes employee education, staff monitoring, and CDC preventative guidance actions. They have identified minimum staffing requirements for drinking water treatment plants, and if they need to implement going down to just minimum staffing, they will do that. They have also identified employees within, within their organization that ha, that have certified operator licenses that don't currently work in the plants. It could be brought into their plants if they need to, if they have staffing issues. And then finally, they have canceled all in-person meetings with non-water authority staff unless absolutely required for their operations. So the next slide, these are things that we, the water system, are doing. So first, we want to ensure dependable water service. And to do that, non-essential water line shutdowns that impact residential customers, numerous residential customers, will be delayed, be delayed for at least two weeks. So we're going to work with our contractors and our developers who are out there doing projects to delay any, any shutdowns that we can for at least two weeks, and then we'll monitor after that. Water line shutdowns that impact commercial customers will be evaluated on a case-by-case basis. And finally, customers who are having difficulty paying their water bills, we will assist them to the extent possible, including giving them payment arrangements as needed. And then for our continuity of operations, we also have identified minimum staffing requirements for our wastewater treatment plants, and then we can implement those if we need to. Although we aren't anticipating any trouble getting chemicals, we are topping off our chemical tanks at all of our treatment plants to ensure that we have the chemicals that we need to provide the treatment at the, at our wastewater treatment plants. Our water line and sewer line maintenance crews currently all meet at one location. So starting this week, we're going to decentralize them. We're going to have them split and report to one of six different locations, so they're not all congregating at the same area every morning. Our field staff, when they need to contact a property owner because they're working in front of their yard, we've told them to maintain at least six feet of separation, and then we're going to go to try and to contact that customer by phone or email if we can, rather than knocking on the door. And then finally, we are, this week, we're going to suspend taking in-person payments at our customer service building. We are encouraging customers to pay through our drive-through. It will remain open. Our lockbox online by calling us, by using our automated phone system, or by mailing a check. In additions, if customers need to start service or cancel service, they can do that online, and they can also do that by calling us rather than coming in the office.
Judy, one thing, and I know I just did it last week, just a reminder to folks that the, if you are paying by automatic payment, you have till when, May 1st, is it, that you have to go over to the new system?
Yes.
Yes, you might want to make sure that Ross puts that out, and if we continue doing newsletters, because otherwise those automatic payments will stop, correct?
And before we discontinue any of those, we are going to reach out to those customers. So if, if we have people that haven't switched over by May 1st, we're going to contact them directly rather than just, just, you know, eliminating that.
Couple of things. First of all, I would really encourage you on this third bullet on the top, including scheduling of payment arrangements. There may be a lot of people impacted by this coronavirus who are hourly workers. And work, I would encourage you to work real, real carefully with them, all right? I think they're good people who are going through some really tough times, and whatever you can do to help them out, I think they would really appreciate it, and they'll be lifelong friends of yours forever, because the circumstance they're going through are like none other, other than a recession 10 years ago. And the second one, if you are going to have more calling service, calling customer service, are you going to put in additional lines and, and people to take those phone calls? I mean, if you're encouraging this, that means you're going to get more phone calls, and we don't want to have as a lot of busy signals.
Right.
So my question is, what are we doing to, to, to prepare for that contingency?
So currently, it takes about six weeks to train somebody to take those phone calls because of all of our policies, so we can't really add any, any staff to do that. We're going to work with the staff that we have.
Okay.
To answer those questions.
Well, you might want to think about if you can, you know, telling you to do your job, but bringing people back that are retired, something like that. Look at all options to do that, because it's one thing to advertise that and something else saying, please be patient.
Ms. Chairman, something we might be able to do is, and I don't know how many folks are on this part of the agency, but maybe staggering shifts so that you can extend the hours that they would be able to call in. I don't, and do we have 24-hour calling?
No, we do not.
Right, so maybe what you can do is if it's, say, only eight hours in the day, and, you know, people are working specific times, maybe stagger when the employees come in so that we can cover a, a wider range of times.
So one thing we want to be careful to do is with the social distancing, we are, actually, we want to minimize the number of people that have to come into our office and work in that area, but we, we can answer questions online and help customers. We have an email address, so that we're going to really try to push customers to email us. If the phones are busy, you know, send an email, and we'll answer them via email. And we can put some more people on helping out with the emails.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, can I say something before Jackie comes up and does the VOC thing? I just want to thank all the employees. Clearly, a whole lot of work went into all of this. The thing that's impressed me the most, we have a whole lot of new agency heads that have had to kind of step up and really kind of not just hit the ground running, but hit the ground in a sprint. And so I just want to say thank you.
I'm sure the board echoes that sentiment, absolutely.
Thank you. We appreciate that, because we do know that a lot of people had to give up their weekend to do this, and they were happy to do it, because this is something that we need to do to ensure our employees, that we care about them, and that we want to make it right, as well as our, our citizens that we serve, to let them know we are trying to address some of the issues and concerns that they have around this virus.
Is there a weekend, really?
I know, right? I feel you. So a great segue is that if we do need to bring someone back, I think Steve McCullers is retired. If we want to bring someone back to answer the phone. Seriously, on the Board of Commissioners' general guidelines, we are looking at, first of all, we're not doing an overall county closure or shutdown. However, we do recommend that there are some limited operational services via a skeletal crew of folk, as determined by the department heads and approval by the County Manager's Office, effective this Wednesday, March 18th, at 12:01 a.m. until further notice by the County Manager's Office. So what we are asking is that some employees who are non-essential, in order to make sure that we are listening to the guidance from Public Health and are not putting folk at danger or in danger or clustering or whatever, we are asking some employees to work from home, to telework. And with that, we have asked the department heads to look at the, not only the number of folk, but the essential positions that need to actually report to the office. So again, the county is not asking the board to close down, but we are going to be asking you to allow us, through the County Manager's Office, to direct some offices to work from home, and others will actually come into the office. So we are encouraging the elected officials, constitutional officers as well, to do what they feel is appropriate for their operation. Next, those departments that we are asking to work in a limited capacity or to be able to provide services, just as Judy talked about, through technology and different ways of getting their services met, like Community Development, Water, Tax Assessor's Office, the Tax Commissioner's Office, DOT, and others, we're asking them to think creatively and out of the box so that they can minimize person-to-person contact, as has been directed by our Public Health officials. So we are going to be closing some facilities, and you all have been apprised of those, like senior services, our libraries, some of our recreational centers, and some of the other facilities. We will be closing some of our lobbies, public intake areas, and in some cases, entire buildings, in instances where technology, drive-through, call-in service, or queued space service can be provided. We are going to implement those protocols in concert with CDC guidelines, including social distance guidelines. So with that, I thank all of the departments for giving you a, a quick and detailed update on how they have been addressing some of these issues. But at this time, I would just like to, to ask Tony to bring forward those policies, employee-related policies, that we are now going to ask you to take action upon, unless there are questions about any other departments that have been before you this afternoon. Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, and we may be on the same wavelength here. With the limited operational services, it's my understanding that we will be encouraging employees who are non-essential to the function of their department, that they can work from home, or?
Yes.
Okay, so those that will be encouraged to come in will be those who are in a transactional department, which you have listed, but on a limited basis.
Yes.
With a skeletal crew, as determined by the department head, which it states. So an employee who is a non-transactional employee, whose role is not, is, is not necessary to that department operation on-site, they will be encouraged to work home?
Yes.
Okay, and that's general across every department?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're asking the departments, again, to think creatively about how they choose to do that. So for example, some departments are staggering. Folk who may come in Monday, Wednesday, Friday, another group may come in Tuesday, Thursday. They may look at it where there's a group that comes in eight to noon or eight to one.
Okay.
And another group may come in. So because this is happening so quickly, they haven't had a chance to really, the department heads haven't had a chance to really put all of this into place. So we're asking you, the board, to trust us in the County Manager's Office, to work with them, to be able to do what we need to do to make sure that county government continues to operate, but in a manner that takes into account their overall well-being as well, in addition to the point that you brought up about childcare. So we have to be cognizant of that as well. So with that, we're saying, we don't have all of the answers today, but we will have them by the end of the day and tomorrow, so that this would, if you so approve, which is what we are saying we're doing, will take effect Wednesday morning.
Great. Um, another question related, I'm in support of that. For employees who work part-time, um, how will their pay be impacted by their limited presence?
So, let's go through the policies that Tony's going to talk about and he will address that.
Okay.
Okay, because it, it does have some implications for part-time employees as well as full-time.
Very good.
Tony?
Good afternoon. So the, the task force and the HR and legal have worked to bring three policies to the board today that we feel like we need your action during this, uh, event, pandemic event. So I'll start with the first one, I guess to ask you your question, Commissioner Cupid, we'll start with the inclement weather policy. So, uh, we've taken the existing inclement weather and, and, uh, made some changes to it to accommodate the current pandemic event and are recommending a change in the title so it can be used ongoing for this event and for the future with inclement weather, um, to call it an emergency closure policy with the revisions that have been presented. And within that policy, it did have language in there about how making up, allowing part-time employees to make up time for inclement weather events. But in this event, because it could be a longer closing period, we've recommended removal of that language going forward. So that, so that way, the entire policy would apply to the whole workforce, whether you're part-time or full-time. So if there is a closure impacting the time you're normally scheduled to work with, whether you're part-time, then you would be paid for the time you would be normally scheduled to work.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want me to go through each policy or you want to take action with each one?
No, we, um, I think we, we've had the policies for a couple of days, so we should be able to just go through each one.
Okay, so the second one is a public health emergency response policy. Um, this was a new policy that was created specifically for this event, um, to cover the COVID-19. So the employees who were actually impacted directly, whether they've been in exposure or there's a quarantine that's required them to be out of the workplace, that they would be on paid administrative leave and not be required to use any of their accrued sick or annual. Any questions on that? Okay, the next one is the telework.
Hold on, Commissioner Gambrell has a question. Sure, go ahead, absolutely.
Okay, I wasn't sure, because I also have questions on the emergency closure policy. Um, but on this one, the public health emergency policy, number C specifically. So that way you can, is where I'm at. Okay, it, it says any employee that has been sent home by the county. And then essentially, how are we know they're going to be able to be tested? Because we're hearing that not everyone is being allowed to be tested if they don't meet all the criteria. So if we require them to be tested in order to have them be gone, how are we going to handle that?
Well, we, we will require them to provide documentation to get the paid admin leave. And practice now what happens whenever administrative leave is used for other purposes. If it, it becomes timing with payroll to get an employee paid, we may use, uh, some of their accrued leave, but then when we get the documentation that we needed from the health department or from a practitioner, then we would reverse that and restore their leave and put paid admin leave in.
Okay, so if they're not diagnosed with the COVID-19, then are you going to go back to which policy? Because you sent them home based on this policy, but if they don't test?
If they've been sent home by management, it would be an admin leave paid, whether it's through a medical event or through the county manager authorizing that.
And, and Commissioner Gambrell, I think, um, that if you kind of think about the sequence that we've been told that happens is like in your workplace, if your boss or, or you think that you might have the symptoms, you go home. Then what's going to happen is you're going to go through, and I think the president outlined it in the news conference on Friday, that online, there's going to be this kind of decision tree you're going to go through and it's going to ask you this question and that question. And then ultimately, if you're candidate for testing, it's going to send you to go get tested. And then when you go get tested, then it's, right Janet, am I, how am I doing here? Right, right, that, that's how it's supposed to work. But, I mean, I, I think what Tony's saying is, you know, if we send you home, clearly, it's an administrative decision. And then, um, if the disease progresses and you do indeed have it, then you're going to get tested. And if you don't, well, then you're covered by the fact that we sent you home.
And then also, um, how are we going to handle if a, an employee is admitted and we don't know to the hospital? How will that be communicated back to us because of the HIPAA? I mean, will that be communicated back to the county so that we can take corrective action? Or how will we know if the employee isn't sent home by us, but they are admitted?
If, if they've been admitted to the hospital, it would be like any other sick event, we would ask for some kind of medical certification for them to be returned back to work. And that would have information.
But I guess in this instance, if, if they're admitted to the hospital with COVID-19 and, and we've got a potential direct exposure, how would, how would that be communicated back to us so that we could then notify the appropriate department or people that could be potentially affected?
I think right now, the, the task force through, working through Dr. Morris has asked that, uh, EMA be notified when the department management is aware, as well as human resources, so that there are people at the county that can work with the health department to make sure that tracking is occurring.
But we do have to be very careful with HIPAA in doing that, so the appropriate people will be notified.
Permission for, to know that.
They, trust me, they're letting us know if they think that they have been exposed or have had, uh, an indirect contact or a direct contact. They are letting us know right now. And then we're telling them to follow the appropriate step as, steps as outlined by public health officials.
I don't, I don't know of a single instance where an employee had some kind of a medical issue that even if they didn't tell us about it, somebody in their family or friends told us about it. In other words, we didn't have somebody going to hospital or die in this county and we didn't know about it forthwith. So whatever that informal process is, it seems to be working. And I think the same thing would happen here because if you, particularly if you know that that's your primary breadwinner, you're going to want to make sure that your employee knows that they've been admitted to the hospital so that, you know, the, you know, the benefits continue.
Well, I think also too, if, if it's somebody that we sent home, then their, their manager or their boss is going to kind of be checking up on them to see if they're coming back because we just talked about how we're going to be rotating people in and out. And, you know, if, if they hadn't been sent home and all of a sudden end up in the hospital, well, their boss is going to be wondering where they are. So, I mean, I don't think it's going to go, like the chairman says, unnoticed that, that they're not here.
Thanks. Okay, you have a question, I'm sure? Okay, alright. Did you have one on the teleworking one? Or is the third one you have? Well, you said you had a que, well, he just did teleworking, so. I thought we just did teleworking, didn't we?
No, sir, we, I, I didn't, I was about to present that one.
Oh, go ahead, alright, go ahead, I'm sorry. She was right, I was wrong. I'll listen to my tie. Again.
Uh, the teleworking policy is one that's been in place for, for a long time. We just had been planning to bring it anyway to the board this year. This just escalated, uh, bringing it forward. And so we, uh, made changes out to be more relevant during our current times, um, to accommodate teleworking in the department. So, those changes are, are noted as in, in the copies that you received.
Now, Commissioner Gambrell.
Okay, and, um, second page, it says teleworking is not an alternative to child or elder care. Yet, in the public safety presentation, they said they were going to be allowing people to tele, telework in order to provide childcare. So, we're now in conflict with what we're doing with our actual policy that's being presented.
I didn't.
I don't think that's what, Randy, I don't think that's what he said or meant. Randy, you want to come and say, that bullet that talked about monitoring?
What, what did you really mean to say, Randy?
Yeah, I don't think it said that we were.
The, the intent of someone being able to telework from home would be those people who are essential employees that also may have childcare issues. And by essential means, we need them to work.
It's on page seven of our presentation packet.
They'll be working just from home.
That's right.
Right, but our telecommunications policy clearly states that it's, you're not supposed to be working from home for the purpose of childcare or elderly care.
Yeah, but I, I, I think that, alright, so let me, let me just kind of separate it out here. We, we kind of have two different situations we're talking about here. One is just a normal teleworking policy, which would be on a normal, normal day, not in the middle of a pandemic, where we do not allow someone to telework from home because they have to deal with childcare. But I think what Randy was saying, hopefully not putting words in your mouth, was that under the consideration of what we're doing right now, because we are going to be sending employees home and, and if they can do their work from home, we would much rather have them at home, regardless of whether it's for childcare or whatever, we would much rather have them at home than here, you know, with being able to do the social distancing. And so I think that you, you kind of have to look at it from two different, two different ways. The teleworking policy, which we were told, you know, they were going to be bringing this back to us anyway, okay? But what the PowerPoint is kind of really during, dealing with the COVID-19 policy. And so, yes, they might be a little bit in conflict with each other, but the pandemic thing is kind of a special circumstance. Whereas some of these changes, I think they're proposing in the teleworking, is kind of more long-term.
And, and, um, recognition of Commissioner Gambrell's observation, page 10 of 13 of this packet.
Page 10?
Page 10.
Yeah, of the teleworking policy.
The first sentence.
What page, what page?
Page 10.
Page 10 at the top.
It says page 10 of 13.
At the very top.
Where it says any employee designated?
No, teleworking is not an alternative to child or elder care, and when applicable, the telework must be incorporated.
It says in bold and underlined, um, what Commissioner Gambrell is asserting. However, I also agree with what Commissioner Otis saying because this is a public, um, health response. So e, even if you just put a caveat in that policy that says, um, unless, I don't know, A, B, or C, um, conditions aren't met. So unless there is a public health, unless there, there is an emergency closure, it would address both concerns and still.
How about, how about we put in there, unless circumstances, um, are approved or something by the county manager?
What was your wording, Commissioner Cupid, about the emergency?
It was Commissioner Gambrell.
Okay, what was your wording?
Just add, um, unless, you know, emergency closure policy is inactive.
Well, I mean, but you want to restrict it to just that? I think that, um, since it's a personnel issue, would you not want to let the county manager make the, the whole ending decision?
Well, I think that, but the two are connected. I see what they're saying, okay?
No, I mean, I see what they're saying too, but I mean, um, I don't know, it just seems to me that, that, um, it's kind of a little bit more restrictive than I think it needs to be. Just saying that it can only happen if the emergency closure policy is in place. I mean, there could be some other circumstance that all of a sudden comes up and by only having that in there, then you're not, you're tying the county manager's hands. Where, I mean, you know, you could put in there at the discretion of the county manager and then say something. For example, if the emergency closure policy is in place or something. But I just think that there's, there could potentially be other circumstances where it may be desirable to allow to happen. That's all I'm saying.
So if you incorporate both these suggestions, that takes care of it.
Would take care of it, sir.
Alright, for example, emergency closure procedures. So that takes care of Commissioner Gambrell's concerns, Commissioner Otis. Anybody else want to add to this sentence?
No, but it's just, we should have wording if we're going to vote on it.
We will, right, absolutely.
So we, basically what I heard was this, unless the.
So it's Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Otis start out with, at the discretion of the county manager, for example, implement, implementing emergency, emergency closure procedures, alright? Teleworking is not an alternative to child or elder care. Alright, that's what we should say. To start that, that sentence.
Will do.
Got it.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
I also have another question, which I know I've addressed offline in another circumstance, but if we're encouraging teleworking, this does put the onus on the employee to still have the equipment and the other means to facilitate teleworking. So it's just important that, that's made clear.
And we have worked on that, Commissioner. We asked each department manager to provide to IS, um, the positions, including the people who are considered essential, who would need VPN access from working at home. And we are also going to be communicating to all of our employees that you can actually access your email through webmail without actually needing VPN access. So that's what they are working on right now, for those who actually need to remote into their computer.
Yeah.
Sharon has that information and others who may be working from home and who just basically need to be responding to email to keep up with what's going on, they can do that as well. The other thing we are sharing with them, as you probably heard on, um, television, is cybersecurity.
Yeah.
And Sharon has shared this with our department managers a lot of time. Hackers and people who want to do bad things to your network, while we're focused on COVID-19 of figuring out how they can get into your system. So we're also communicating about if you are working remotely, being careful and cognizant of the fact that, I mean, you're, you're, the potential exposure.
And just another, um, tool too, that can be costly, is the use of phones, particularly if we're dealing with citizens or customers. And, you know, I've gone back and forth with, about my assistants and do I allow them to follow up on matters by phone? Because not, everything, um, comes in via email. And I just told them that I will do, I will subject myself to, um, having to take any of those calls. But that is an ongoing concern that we have about, um, them being able to work from home. But ha, having to call someone, um, without subjecting their, um, their personal phones to, um, public use.
Yes, ma'am. And we will keep you guys apprised of.
So if you can make any headway, that's just, you know, on that, that'll be helpful.
And if you all think of other things that perhaps county manager's office hasn't thought of, because again, this was kind of a quick response to the request for the special call meeting, please.
I'm calling governor in 15 minutes.
Have access to us and we'll be happy to, to respond.
Sure, thank you.
So at this time, I think there are motions or motions needed.
No, I have, I have a conversation going back to the emergency closure policy.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, under number three, the policy, um, it says the county manager will consult with elected officials regarding the suspension of normal operations. Again, I'm not criticizing what we've done, but I don't see that being done. Essentially, what I saw was the county manager interacting with the directors and the department heads to make the determination if closures will happen. So shouldn't the policy reflect that? Because, you know, we haven't been inputting into that, to my knowledge, to, as far as the closures. So my question is, is the policy as written, I'm not seeing it being followed? And do we need to amend it as such to what we're actually doing?
Based on what I, I'm hearing from, um, HR director, Mr. Hagler, he said this is referring to other elected officials. Like courts. SO courts.
Okay, so, so can we define that? Because I know a lot of people are looking at it and saying, you know, why aren't we making the decision, we being the board? But it's not up to the board. So can we, can we clarify that somehow?
Maybe Jackie can just put in there, um, parentheses again, constitutional officers.
Okay.
Well, I, I would suggest it's broader than just constitutional. We have other elected officials that are not necessarily constitutional officers.
Okay, well, then you put in there, other than the Board of Commissioners.
There you go.
Elected officials other than the Board of Commissioners.
Well, that would be exclusive then, and then, that, that means he would not consult with you at all at that point in time.
But I, to, to tag on to the county manager's, um, comment, I mean, we set the policy. You guys make the decision. So, you, I mean, I know I've been involved in a couple of conversations just because I was standing in the room, but, I mean, are you consulting with any of us as far as what to do? I, I know that's a loaded question, but, 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 I mean, you, but i, in my mind, you know, the county manager, the deputy, I mean, you guys are pretty much taking this and running with it with the department heads, um, independent of the board.
That was the direction that we received from, from the chairman as it relates to employee-related matters and that we will keep you guys apprised. But based on our communication with, with the chairman, uh, it was, I mean, this thing is moving quickly. Do whatever you feel you need to do.
Commissioner Gambrell, I think in the 12 years I've been up here, anytime that we've closed the county, whether it was for inclement or whether whatever, it never happened without the commissioners not, we, we all knew that it was going to happen before it happened.
Yeah, and I think the thing about what happened with this particular crisis is that things change day to day. It's amazing how what we knew last Saturday is different than what we know today. And there's just no way the county manager can efficiently run the, the county if we have to stop every, every day here and try to gather a consensus from the board. if we have to stop every, every day here and try to gather a consensus from the board. That's just not how something this big works. We have to trust the county manager who we, you know, approved to get on with the day to day function of doing this. And they can always come back if there's an action that, you know, has to be, be reviewed. But we have to give them the flexibility to react to a crisis as it emerges.
And, and I agree with you, but we need to make sure the policy reflects that.
Okay.
And right now, the way the policy reads, it doesn't necessarily reflect that. Then, this is also seen in number five, Jackie.
Same page, Commissioner?
Emergency closure, yep, number five. It also says the county manager in consultation with the elected officials.
Okay.
Again, I haven't seen that happen in this event. And again, I know this event is different than a snow event. But again, I, our policy needs to be reflective of what we're doing. And then also at the very end, it says then, and then it's been corrected. It's T H I S E, policy would be in effect. I'm not sure if it's supposed to be this or these. I think it's supposed to be this.
Right, this.
Yep, so we just need to correct that.
Okay, thank you.
And then, second page, B, it would be 6B. And again, I know this policy is usually done for, you know, snow events as such. But here, given we're being told that this could last eight to 10 weeks, with doing the accrued leave as we are, we could potentially be giving employees eight to 10 weeks of vacation time. Is that?
Additional.
Additional.
Right. And I had the same issue with you, like, I don't understand why, well, they're still working, we're just making them work from home. All right, and by call, we can always call them back in at any time. So I don't understand why we're providing them vaca, annual leave time when they're still in a leave status. And we just, we're just making them work from home for now.
It, it, it's, that was put in place a number of years ago because we have so many of our public safety, water staff that have to work because they're essential staff. So they're being paid to be worked, but they get additional leave for the times that they're working.
I get that part, but that's additional, all right? Like, for instance, if we have, if we have a certain circumstance where they're going to be called and identified to work, that's one thing. But this, this is a collective body, all right? Where we're all going to be essentially working from home unless we call you to work in your normal workspace. This is not the other circumstance where, you know, you're all being sent home and you're going to stay there because all operations have ceased. The county's still operating. We're just doing it in a modified fashion.
Right, but Mr. Chairman, I think you're answering your own question because if the county isn't officially. No, if the county isn't officially closed, which the very first slide said that we were doing a limited operational services, the county's not closed, this policy is not placed.
Right.
This policy is not being implemented as long as the county is open. And, and I can only think of in 12 years, one time that we might have closed the county. Yeah, but it was, it was not just any snow. And so I think it's important, and Jackie mentioned it in the very beginning in her PowerPoint, that the county is not closing. So the closure policy is not being put in place. I mean, yes, you are correct that if the county closes, that's in here. But in this, even in this situation that we're in right now, we're not closing the county.
Right.
No, sir, but I, I do want to, I do want to point out that there may be instances that there are going to be employees that are going to be for social distancing and, and public health, based on public health recommendations. They're going to be employees that are going to ask, to be asked to go home. And they may not be working at home. And I, I think that those employees would still be paid.
I don't think anybody is saying that.
Because of the public health crisis that we're facing. And so I think the distinction here is when those, there may be some employees that are going to be at home and could be receiving, receiving pay. And there are going to be those that are going to be asked to either work at home, telework, or they're going to be asked to come in to man the essential services, particularly the transactional services. I think that's why there's the extra leave that is afforded to them.
Right, but I'm going to throw this back at you, Rob, okay? And I'm going to, he's going to grin over here. In a lot of ways, I don't think we have a whole lot of non-essential employees. We've made this point to make sure that we keep a lean workforce. So the fact of the matter is, probably 80 or 90% of the employees we have are going to be coming in at some point in time over this period of time, not all together, okay? We talked about.
That is an accurate statement. I would agree with you.
Moving around, so the fact of the matter is, if you're working Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Jackie's working Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, then on Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, you're at home. Now you're going to get paid, but we're not, we don't, I think the chairman's right. You don't need to get anything extra. And, and so I think that in the acknowledgement that we don't have a whole lot of extra people, okay? Because even the parks and rec, I mean, if, if parks are going to be open, all right? And we're going to have to increase the cleaning of the bathrooms or the playground equipment. There's going to be stuff for them to do. So I think that, you know, this, I know where it comes from, and it came from when, you know, if, if we did close, like we talked about for a snow event or whatever, and we have these public safety employees that are having to come in. But we're, we're not in that situation. I think everybody that is here at the county is going to be doing something. They were, they're just not all going to be doing it together. And we're not going to be doing it necessarily in the same way that we've done it in the past. And I, and I think it's one offs that we're going to have where we have childcare or the issues like Commissioner Cupid brought up. And I think that you all have kind of addressed that. Obviously, we're going to try to do the teleworking as much as possible. So, I mean, I, I just think that it's important to emphasize that we are not closing. We're doing limited operations, you know, irregular operations, whatever you want to call it. And, you know, so I, we don't have a lot of non-essential employees. Everybody, everybody that works here has something that we need them to do.
Understood. I, I just wanted to make sure that we were forthright with the board, that there, there may be some instances where we are directing employees to go home because of recommendations that come from the public health realm that may not be able to be assigned a teleworking job or may not be able to be directed to come in. And we still feel like we would recommend that we take care of those employees and provide them with.
I don't think anybody's saying not to that.
Understood. I, I just wanted to make sure we were being clear with the board.
But the ones that we do have a way for them to telework or the ones that do get to come in, you know, they're, if, like you said, if somebody's in Monday, Wednesday, Friday, they know they're not going to be here Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. And the other ones that work shifts, I mean, that's just the nature of certain jobs.
Understood.
So, I mean, but I, no, I, I think that, I don't think anybody up there in the board, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I know myself personally, I have no problem if we have to send people home because of CDC recommendations or whatever. No, I mean, I don't have a problem paying them. But they need to have the understanding that we may be calling them on a Saturday and say, we need you to come in today. You haven't been here Monday through Friday, but we need you to come in this day because we have something for you to do.
No, I just wanted to, I didn't mean to complicate the issue. I just wanted to make sure we were being forthright with the board to make sure the board understood what staff was recommending, sir.
So then my next question is, is do we need to change the title of this policy? Because it's a, you know, emergency closure policy, which makes us think we're going to close. But should we change it to emergency conditions policy and tighten your tie?
The county attorney and I were, and I, I see you, Chairman, smiling. The, the county attorney and I were discussing titling it differently, Commissioner, which I think we could tie in the limited operational services component that we've been discussing today. And with the board's permission, perhaps we be, if there is a motion by this board at our request to adopt the policy, perhaps as we have done in other cases, particularly code amendments, that we be allowed to make some adjustments to reflect the direction of the board as it relates to titling the document and inserting the limited operational language that I think we've discussed pretty good, or pretty, we vetted very well today. And that we be allowed to make those editorial changes to implement the desire of the board, sir.
Today or at a later time, or?
What I, Commissioner Cupid, I, I think that if we were to have a day or two to make those particular changes, we could certainly get them back to the board. But moving forward with the, what we're recommending as far as Wednesday at 12:01 a.m., we would like for the board to adopt that and give us the leeway to make the necessary editorial corrections.
Adopt this or adopt?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
But recognizing that we do need to be more specific as it relates to the closure and the limited operational, the limited operations that we've discussed, ma'am.
And, and I think, Rob, I mean, if any commissioner, once you get the language changed, you know, based on the comments from the board, if any commissioner sees something that needs to be changed, the next time the board meets, we can make those tweaks at that time.
Yes, sir, certainly.
At least allow you to put it in place.
That's correct, sir. And, and that, and staff would be fine with that, understanding that things have been moving really, really fast. Jackie was in here Saturday and Sunday. And just in Saturday and Sunday, we were not high fiving because we were high elbowing. But we were, I was congratulating Jackie, and then we, there was something that came out last night. And Jackie called me and, oh my gosh, that changed from what I worked on today. So we, we know it's going to move quickly. And certainly if the board is, we, we appreciate the board's support. We appreciate the board allowing us to, to have the flexibility, and we'd be fine with that, Commissioner.
If there's anybody that understands how things can change hour by hour, it's me with my other job because I don't even know where the planes are going to fly.
And just one other, it's, it's the very last one. It says all non-BOC employees are expected to follow the directive of their elected officials. Shouldn't that be county manager or directors? Because it's non-BOC.
BOC employees are the ones that are under the county manager.
This says non-BOC.
Right, non-BOC would be everybody that's more in, in a constitutional officer or another elected official. So like the superior court clerk, the judges. BOC employees are everybody that works under the county manager. Non-BOC are like, for example, Barry's here. I mean, they work in Barry's office, they work in the superior court, that's all the non-BOC.
Okay, but I guess that goes back to the first paragraph where we're discussing of what was the elected officials.
Right, but there, I mean, in that particular, I mean, I understand in the earlier ones, but in, in that particular one, everybody that is a non-BOC employee works for an elected official. There's, the confusion you said on the other ones, I get, but this one, this one's pretty clear.
Okay, I, I just want to emphasize to county manager, deputy, and HR that my position is that if an employee does not need to be here to, to maintain what is considered an essential task of county government, they should not be here, period. I'm even concerned about this meeting. This is the most number of people that I've been around in a long period of time. And I'm already starting to feel some, some kind of way. I'm serious. Some of you may, seriously, maybe it's the alcohol making me dizzy from cleaning my hands every five minutes. But if we do not need an employee coming on site to wherever their location of business is for county government, I do not want them to be here over the next couple of weeks, period.
Sure, Commissioner Garambrell.
The, as far as working from home or out in the field, going directly like code enforcement, or are those decisions up to the department head or their supervisor?
The recommendation comes from the department head to the county manager to approve.
Okay. Okay, so you're the ultimate. Yeah, I know. You're going to extend your stay?
I've tried. I really tried.
Okay, any more questions on that policy, Commissioner? Okay?
Chairman, if, if I may. We're going to formulate the motion. I think it'd be substantially similar to the policy that we have here. But then, as edited by the comments and suggestions made by the board, to be brought back at the next meeting for final approval. Something along those lines.
So what are we going to do in the meantime?
No, no, it would be passed today. Formed as substantially similar to what we've had, as edited by the comments and suggestions made by the board.
Okay.
Okay?
But allowed to be implemented.
Allowed to be, yeah, allowed to be implemented, but then to be brought back to the board.
Yeah, and that, and the clerk will get that note for the motion. So Commissioner, so a week, have you got one more?
That's all of them, yes, sir.
All right, so do you want us to approve each one of them, make a motion each one individually? How do you want us to do that?
However, the attorney wants to do it, that gets it accomplished.
Excuse me, I'd prefer that we, based upon that last instruction, that we look at the emergency closure policy.
Okay.
With the phraseology that I suggested from the board.
You want a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Please, yeah.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the emergency closure policy in substantial conformity to what's in the agenda with the changes mentioned by the board and recorded by the clerk with the name change to the limited operational, what did we say? Well, no, that's what they wanted to change it to. I just want to make sure that we don't get stuck with that name when they don't want that name.
Okay, we have a second? I'll second it. We have a second. All right, end of discussion. Call the question. Passes five to zero, okay. Does that cover them all, Bill?
Yes, sir, that would just be that one.
That's what I thought. The limited operational one.
Did I need to have in there to allow it to be implemented on that date or that's separate, right?
Since it wasn't included in the first one, yes, it's allowed to be implemented that day, yes.
Okay, so just add that to the motion that it don't be allowed to be implemented on, on March 18th at 12:01 a.m. Well, that, but that's, that's separate because otherwise it's going to be in place all the time. I mean, we're approving, we're approving the changes to the policy.
Correct.
But I, it would seem to me that you want to have a separate motion.
Well, the policy, the policy would be implemented today as soon as you pass it today. That, that takes care of that. You don't have to have.
Yeah, we don't, we don't need a motion if they want it implemented on March 18th. That's something totally separate, right?
Correct, that would be the county manager, the executive officer, the county.
Okay. So the next one is, and I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the public health emergency policy as presented. Discussion. Call the question. Passes five to zero. Okay. I'm looking for the other one here. The teleworking, okay. And now I make a motion that we approve the teleworking policy as revised and presented. Discussion. Call the question. Passes five to zero. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, what I'd like to have is Dr. Memark come up, and Lisa also. And I'd like you to give us your latest recommendation about, you know, how the COVID-19 virus is going to impact the workplace and any suggestions you might have that the board might want to consider. And also the county manager with regard to the, the fast breaking chain of events.
Well, since we've been here, I'm, I'm getting texted nonstop that now it's not 50 people, but we're looking at 10. So you all, we've all been hanging out together for the last few hours. So there, it looks like the president has recommended less than 10 people that to congregate. So that's something to, to.
We're in violation.
So some of the things that we, we're very excited that you all talking about, social distancing, and, and that's great. So if you've seen the, the models and the curves out there and what's been happening, the lack of testing that is happening right now does not give us an ability to get a good picture of what is happening right now. So, you know, we use the evidence that we have and, and what is happening throughout the nation to make a lot of these decisions and recommendations. And so being able to social distance is one of the only weapons that we have right now to put a stop to the progression of this, of this disease. So we really are excited to hear that. And a lot of your policies, even your stay at home policy and, and leave, those are fantastic. We are working on that ourselves and having a hard time getting those because we're, a lot of our employees are under the state system, and so that makes it a little bit more difficult for us. So those are, those are really good policies that we're seeing. And staying at home, so making sure that everybody is understanding of that. Then if there's any question or, you know, not having a lot of proof that needs to be provided by the employee, but making sure that we stay at home when we are exhibiting any symptoms and are ill. We talked a little bit about testing, and I did want to make sure that people were aware that this is a presidential mandate and priority right now, as well as for the state of Georgia. And so testing is something that is being worked on very hard by the state. And so common douglas public health will be part of that as well. So we're really trying to help to get whatever is available, try to bring it to our community and help out as well in that regard. One of the things that you all had talked about was kind of continuing essential services for the county going. continuing essential services for the county going, and those are fantastic, but one of the things that we do want to think about is some of our vulnerable populations. I know you all have thought a lot about that, and so there's certain populations that have a little bit more trouble, and so are homeless populations, as well as patients that are mentally ill, and elderly populations. So these are just some things to think about. When, when you talked about the water, I love that you had talked about, you know, giving some special consideration to people, but remember, in this case, there's no hand sanitizer out there, right? And so people need to be able to wash their hands. And so I would really love to have some consideration for not shutting off people's water best we can, because they do need to be able to wash their hands. It's probably one of the only things that we have, so. But we're working very hard to, around the clock, to try to get a control of this and hope, I, I was pleased and a little tired to hear our names mentioned so often, but we've been trying to, trying to get a touch on everybody and to help get this message out, and we, we've tried to be ahead of it, and, and we really, we are really just thankful to the county. The county has been ahead of the curve on this, and, and we know by, we're on state calls and listen to other counties that are dealing with this. And I feel like Cobb County has some of the best leaders and are ready to do whatever is necessary to keep this from spreading in our, in our group and in the community. So did you have specific questions?
Yeah, one thing I'd like you to highlight is it's already out there, Dr. Memark. The state is going to implement some mobile test sites, and there's this belief that everyone is eligible to go to these test sites, when in fact, I don't think that's quite the case. You explain what the state is doing here in this regard?
So we're preparing right now to be able to offer more sites to test. Now, this is, the issue is that there are not enough test kits, and they're working very hard to increase the volume and number. Even the ones that they are coming out with right now, it's not enough for the population. And so what they're looking at is prioritizing people that have to get tested. So the ones that we're looking at are people who need to know because they will be affecting another group of, of essential people that will provide essential services. So for example, those are healthcare providers. So you, we sometimes need to know if a healthcare provider is infected, so whether they can go back to work and, and continue to help people, right, that, that need medical care. Other people are potentially in nursing homes. So you've seen what's happened in Washington State. One case can lead to a, a bunch of people getting infected, as well as quite a few deaths, and that's something that we want to avoid as well. So they're looking at these very high-risk populations to start, and there's going to be a rollout of this. So it will start with whatever test kits that we get, and there's, it's a moving target. We don't know how many yet, but however we get, however many we get, we will do as many tests as we possibly can. And so we're committed to doing that. And eventually, it will get on to surveillance when we have those millions of tests available. We only, in our community, need 900,000 for both Cobb and Douglas, so, but those, when we get to that point, that is the, the medium-long-term goal for us to be able to do that. But right now, it is going to be on just the highest priority so that we can try to get a handle of the disease and make sure that we're not spreading it quickly in, in very vulnerable populations.
And I think it's important to remember that, look, it's going to be out there anyhow. The Cobb County site is going to be at the Jim Miller Park, but we want to tell people, don't be driving to Jim Miller Park, because people who tested there are going to be, have control numbers.
Yeah.
And unless you have a control number, you're not going to have access to the site.
No, it's to be pre-approved to, to be able to come, because we, you know, the number's as low as 25 to, we don't know what the number's going to be, so there's no point in, in waiting and, and not getting in if you don't have a number.
Okay, all right. Any questions from the, remember the board? Dr. Memark?
So one more piece to add to that. So as Dr. Memark said, the purpose of testing is to make sure that in really vulnerable populations, we are not continuing to spread it, right? But every resident in this community can do their part. The first step is truly respect the social distancing guidelines, right? The county is not limiting all of these activities, and our school system is not limiting all of this, the school congregating in order for our families to go take our children to the malls, right, and hang out. So every resident can do their part by respecting the social distancing intention, which is to stay home and, and to limit the number of folks that people come in contact with. So we know that's terribly burdensome, but that is what we're going to need for folks to do in order to get on top of this. The second piece about the folks being tested is that if individuals are having mild symptoms, then even if they were tested, that their plan of care would be the same. So if I am not an essential person, like I'm not a healthcare worker serving patients in the hospital, I might not get to the point where I need to be tested in order to control the outbreak in the community, but I still may have symptoms, I still may be positive, but I need to stay home and isolate myself. That wouldn't change if I were tested or not. If I got, if, if I had symptoms of fever, shortness of breath, and coughing, and I didn't get tested, or I did get tested, the recommended next step is for me to isolate at home. And so if people will do that, then that solves a lot of the issue as well.
Okay. And I think it's important to remember that the reason we're doing, in the mitigation phase now, is that we don't want to overwhelm the health facilities. That is, that's what's missing in all this, is that the reason we're doing this, yes, it's bad that you get the illness, but there are a finite number of beds and doctors and nurses and healthcare professionals. And if we don't control this, then we will, we will quickly overwhelm the system, and that is going to be, you know, a catastrophe all in itself. Exactly. So I think that's why, it's why it's important, stay home, you know, social distance and take care of that. So I, I want to commend all you're doing down there at the, at the public health department. You've been real on top of it. And Dr. Memark, you've become a real rock star in video. You're, the hits are all over the page, so you may have a future.
I have a YouTube career after this.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming up. The last I want to bring up, that we've seen in emails from, I'm sure, all of us, about the impact of businesses staying open, okay, and what, what authority the board has to address that. And Bill, if you address, what is the only measure we may have as a board that we can do to, to prevent businesses from opening, or along those lines?
Chairman, it'd be a matter of declaring an emergency and then having those powers that you would be able to have at that point in time. At this point in time, obviously, all just decided the Cobb County government's going to stay open, so that would not be the point that you would be directing that toward at this time.
It's a, it's a case-by-case basis. It's out there in close, that's, that's something we wouldn't want to do, but I can assure you, it'd be something we wouldn't do without, without consultation with the board. Because in that case here, if I understand, the chairman has the authority to declare the emergency without a necessity, without a vote of the board, and that would be controversial in itself, knowing this board. But I just want to assure everybody here that that's the last step measure, but it'll be done in close consultation to every member of this board. No, it will not be contacted unless, if we have to take that step to get the consensus about what we have to do here. Okay, any other things from the board? Thank you for coming today. I appreciate it. Great, great session. Thank you very much for all you're doing. Thank you for the staff. And we're adjourned.